...called meaning order. State of the place.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have no visitors wishing to speak tonight. Who knows, I don't believe we've had any special committee meetings or anything. No, okay. And due to, so people can get out of here and get to the boys championship basketball game tonight, we'll get moving along and get right to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I'm honored to invite Mr. Pigeon and the high school leadership team here tonight to give us an update on the wonderful things happening at our Amherst Central High School.
Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure to have this opportunity annually to update you on all of the great things going on at Amherst High School and really shine a spotlight at the great work of our adults, our faculty, and really shine a nice spotlight on our students and their achievements. Starting with, just recently, we received good news from the College Board and AP that we put on their honor roll. So we're an AP honor roll school. That's a nice distinction. It really highlights the great work our students do in their performance on AP exam. It's also reflected on the amount of students we have per capita in the AP program. Nice little kudos we received recently. You know, our year always starts with action planning and goal setting. So this year, we really wanted to focus on developing readiness for the understanding and being ready for the strategic plan and the district strategic plan. I know that you did get a sneak preview of that, the last meeting. So we've had a team working with the strategic team. Many of our teachers were involved in those efforts. So we wanted to focus on having some readiness steps to be ready for the plan and to begin our work with that. So some of our work, and you'll see in some subsequent slides, have to do with the leadership team we've created to handle the work of the strategic plan. We also wanted to support and enhance our existing data-driven instruction model. And that's been an embedded, mature effort in the building. This year, we wanted to put a special spin and focus on that in the readiness model and mind frame for the strategic plan. So we've added some elements to how we've handled DDI in the past and adding some elements this year in a readiness fashion. And we also wanted to reinforce instructional leadership and reinforce instruction in the classroom and how our teachers are delivering great instruction every day. So we wanted to return to our roots and look at essential elements in the thoughtful classroom and do a lot of work around professional development and how teachers deliver great lessons on a daily basis. So those were our three focus points for the year. You know, as you know, we're focusing on the cornerstones of the Thoughtful Principal Framework, and that is a nice roadmap for how schools, I should say, really move forward in their planning, both on the academic achievement side but also as well as the cornerstones that really affect the climate and the culture of the school. So the first cornerstone, as you know from previous presentations, is organization, rules, and procedures. And that really focuses on how does a school organize and establish the procedures that clarify expectations and really focus things, moving towards and looking at learning and student learning. We've done a lot of work this year. We talked about that readiness for the strategic plan, about building a high school action planning team. Mr. Wiles was instrumental in helping me, and Ms. Abels was instrumental in helping me build that team. Mr. Wiles is going to share a little bit about the work and readiness we've done with the action plan.
So in preparation of launching the work to be done with that action plan, we convened a committee of the administration, a significant number of teachers, parents, some community members, and then a lot of students, really, was the emphasis on this one. And some forty people met on February 16th, and we had our first initial meeting of this high school action planning team. And since the actual strategic plan hadn't been fully unveiled yet, the work that we did at this initial meeting was to develop the group norms. Since there was a lot of different backgrounds, different ages, different, you know, student, teacher, parent relationships that we had to address, the first thing that we did was a lot of the getting-to-know-you activity plus the what type of a group are we going to be? And what type of norms do we need to be effective? Really, that's what it comes down to is the first meeting was, let's all get on the same page in terms of how are we going to work together to tackle this we, yet important task? So the meeting went off wonderfully. There was great reports from everybody that was involved that came to us afterwards. And we're looking forward to the next step, which is actually digging into that action plan and starting to bring some of the goals to fruition.
And we revisited some of our adaptive schools work. We've done some training on that in the past. And it really focused on the norms of collaborative groups and also the differences between discussion and brainstorming and deliberation leading towards kind of decision-making, how you get from ideas to decisions and actions. So that's great work. We've also been working in data-driven instruction and really adding to our plans. Annually, we did some goal setting, but now we wanted to kind of add some meat to the bones in terms of action plans around these goals. Tim and Nan worked with a number of departments, as did I. Tim has a little bit of information on how we moved forward with our data-driven instruction planning this year.
Some of the big differences that we had this year was instead of a collaborative effort of the administrative team with each department, we took on a divide-and-collaborate approach. So we actually broke up the departments and we became kind of the liaison for that department, working side by side with them during their department meetings and really, you know, kind of getting back into the trenches and making sure that in the development of data goals and the process that they need to go through to meet those goals, we were side by side with them, making sure that we were giving the best for them and then also for the students. What we also have here, this is just one example, and there is a handout there which you can feel free to look at at your leisure. But the model that we used for the departments this year was, in fact, the same one we're going to use for the Strategic Action Plan. And this was a nice little opportunity for us to introduce that to the teachers in a way that they could work with it, be comfortable with it, so that when the action plan actually was rolled out, they were comfortable with the format. If you look there, it starts with a goal. And again, this goal was an instructional goal designed to enhance their instruction throughout the year. Then it gets into specific action steps with timeframes allotted to so that we had some measurement and accountability throughout the year. And then the outcomes and refinement are important because not only do we want to see if it worked, if it didn't, if it made improvements, if not, but also the big step, as it's going to come up later this year, is how can we make it better for next year? And how can we improve and continue to give the best to our students? So at the moment, this is just an example with our PE department. They've done a wonderful job in developing a unit, or excuse me, instructional strategies around cardiovascular functioning in an attempt to combat the obesity challenges that our nation faces. So it's a big goal, but also it helps their instruction, gets kids moving more, teaches them about their heart rate, and all those important parts that they can roll into their instruction.
Now, under cornerstone one, you're really looking at things that are embedded systems within the school that just kind of keep on going year after year but run effectively. One of our systems is our instructional support team, or we call it IST. And that's really a team that looks closely at at-risk students. And year after year, we enhance the work of the IST. Ms. Abels heads up the IST, and she's going to share a little bit about the work that they do.
So the goal for IST is to maximize the success of all students. And it's also, at the same time, used as a screening process for any students that may be in need of some additional services. So through that platform, we can recommend students for the academic monitoring program. And we can also, in very rare cases, place students in alternative settings. Any teacher is able to recommend a student. It's used as a way not only to support the student but also to support the teachers in the classroom to maximize that student's success. It just gives us a way to have many different sets of eyes on students. And we work together as a team to really hope that these students can achieve what they can achieve.
And, you know, the volume of work in IST is heavy because we have a number of students that need support. So they meet twice a week to support students and put those plans together with the ultimate goal of no one slips through the crack. Everybody achieves at Amherst High School. IST is definitely a big part of that. Part of the, our job is always safety. And I mentioned a few things in terms of enhancements of safety this year. We've done a lot with our safety planning. And Mr. Bellisle has been instrumental in updating all of our safety plans, strengthening our partnerships with Amherst Police, as well as adhering to the new regulations around four lockdowns and additional, and fire drills. We also have had some enhancements on campus in terms of safety, some traffic enhancements, working through the Town of Amherst Traffic Department. And we've worked with the DOT. Ms. Superintendent Pinella's leadership made some improvements to the Main Street culvert. So I thought I'd mention those because they do fall under cornerstone one. Cornerstone two, positive relationships. How does a school build meaningful relationships among the staff, staff and students in the community? Again, with the lens of how do those relationships promote learning? One of the things that we were aware of was we had a little bit of a leadership opportunity gap in the building. We've always had our pathfinders, who you're very familiar with. We're upperclassmen leaders and have leadership training and leadership opportunities. But we really didn't have anything for underclassmen. So we wanted to start something this year, and we started a new group called the Trailblazers. And it's going to be comprised of our freshmen, and they'll work in cohorts. They'll become leaders, they'll remain trailblazers next year as sophomores. And we'll have a new group of leaders coming. So this year is Trailblazers 2020, our inaugural class of trailblazers. And rather than have me tell you all about it, I have Ani Griven here, who is one of our first trailblazers. She'll tell you a little bit about her trailblazer experience.
Hi, I'm Ani Griven. I'm a freshman at the high school. Trailblazers was an excellent experience for me, transitioning into the high school and getting used to the whole high school experience, especially coming from the middle school. In August, we started as trailblazers in leadership training. We worked with the pathfinders, and we did a lot of leadership activities. So you learn to really value others that you may not know and truly have self-confidence in large groups. Our instructor would have us, we would be talking in a large group, and every time someone answered a question or had a question, we'd have stand-ups, serenades. And that really helped kind of boost your confidence around people you don't know and especially the upperclassmen at the high school and the pathfinders. Trailblazers gave us something to, us as trailblazers, something to look forward to once we came to the high school because it's kind of hard when you come to the high school and you don't really know a lot of the activities that you can get into. So Trailblazers gives you something to look forward to and something to participate in before you even start the school year. Through the pathfinders, you get to, I got to meet new people, new friends, and you get to... Sorry. You get to find out about more opportunities that you can have in the high school. And Tiger For Day, I'll move on to that. That was a very interesting experience to have because we worked with students from other private schools who were middle schoolers, seventh and eighth graders. I worked with and had a shadow from Christ the King. And that was, and we had students from middle school. We had a bunch of people come. And then we each, all the trailblazers had two or three people. And doing that was a good way to reflect and see where we've come from as eighth graders and especially as web leaders as we were in middle school. And working with pathfinders, where we can go in the future if we all choose to become pathfinders. So overall, you get to see a lot of opportunities. You get to meet a lot of new people. You can reflect really on where you've come from and where you're going. And you get to really continue the whole experience of being a leader and starting off as, with a confident start in a new school. Yeah.
Thank you, Ani. That, yeah, it was, I think, a really good job. Good job. Yeah, as you can see, it's always beautiful. It's always gratifying to build new leaders in the building. And it's been personally fun for me because I got to jumpstart my relationship with all the freshmen. So right away, I knew fifty freshmen very, very well. And they became a valuable asset in the building. Beyond hosting the shadows, they've come and volunteered for things, and they've really blossomed in the building. So that's been a real exciting development for us. And Ani mentioned very well the Tiger For A Day. We've brought in our private school students to shadow. We did a special shadow day for them this year, and over fifteen students took us up on that invitation from our private schools. And then we had our middle school shadowing day as well. And we had a record-breaking crowd of seventy-five students shadow this year, which was quite an accomplishment. Fifty trailblazers, seventy-five middle school students. So it was two to one in some respects there. And that was a great experience for the middle school, our middle school students, to get, jumpstart their transition to high school. And a number of parents took us up on our tour offer as well. We do the tours during the day so parents can see the school in action. And we also do a nice presentation for them to start to think about the type of courses and opportunities we have at the high school. So another great way to build positive relationships. New effort going on right now called Challenge to Change. We're working collaboratively with the UV School of Social Work in the Town of Amherst to build a program around unity and racial relationships in our community and beyond. It's really modeled after a very successful program that's been started in Rochester called Rock to Change. So we're using their model, but we're going to make it uniquely Amherst naturally. So we've got a cadre of students interested in this. We kind of kicked it off with a nice assembly on February 28th, which is a little bit of a hybrid between a Black History Month celebration and a bit of a kickoff and promotion of this new effort. Our goal is to identify leaders, to leadership train them, to pull off a summit in the fall. These summits that we've seen in Rochester, Ms. Abels attended one in the fall, and I'll be attending one on March 31st, are really positive events to give students the space, create the space, for them to have courageous conversations and really build that unity. We're relying on our youth to move forward with unity movements in the community. So this is going to be an exciting opportunity. I've been in contact with Street Homeschools and Williamsville Schools on this because we wanted to be an Amherst collaborative, and they're very excited about it as well. One of the assistant principals from Williamsville North is going to be joining me on the 31st going to Rochester. So we're excited about this, and we'll have more information forthcoming on this great new effort, Challenge to Change. Engagement and enjoyment is an important part of what we do at the high school. This cornerstone really talks about how does a school leader in a school motivate students to do their best work and inspire their love of learning? Again, you see the thread of learning running through here. Just an example of how co-curricular opportunities really enhance the curriculum. In fact, you saw Mr. Ben Geist here selling some things. That was for Quiz Bowl, but he's involved in Mock Trial as well. And it's a great opportunity for students. You see them smiling and very proud of one of their latest wins. Mock Trial had a wonderful season this year, made it all the way to the finals and were in the top eight in the county. I believe that co-curricular opportunities and specifically competitive extracurriculars are a very important way to bring engagement, enjoyment, and learning to life in the classroom and outside of the classroom. You're familiar with all of these organizations in the high school. Some more than others. For example, top corner is our Quiz Bowl. And our Quiz Bowl team has grown and blossomed. And now it's even in the middle school, and they're winning, and they're going to Nationals this year. They also joined a local league at the end of last year and fully participated this year. Kind of an IT'S academic-style competition, where you face-to-face competitions with other Western New York schools. So we did very well. We're leading the lead in masterminds right now. We're going to Nationals for Quiz Bowl. Latin Club alive and well. And Latin Club is a competitive club as well as a social-cultural club. And Ms. Boyer's done a great job of taking over that program, and Dr. Virginia's still involved. So our Latin Club is doing great work, and they brought home a boatload of trophies from their regional competition this fall, so they're doing very, very good. The Math League, I wanted to really take a moment to pause and talk about because Math League has blossomed exponentially. Pardon the pun. It's, we're up to 200 students in Math League, which is amazing. It's a huge participation level. And part of that is because they've gone to online testing, and they test in competitions around tests. So kids sign up to take extra math tests. So that's what Math League is all about. And I'm proud to announce, because of that participation and the leadership from Ms. Nardozzi and Ms. Mulvaney, we are, in my history that I'm aware of, state-ranked right now in our Math League. So our Math League is doing very, very well in New York State. Just examples of different types of co-curricular clubs students can get involved in that have a competitive nature and help bring learning to life inside and outside the classroom. Along the same lines but more programmed than clubs is our strategic community partnerships and bringing in outside partners to work with our students. One that's real exciting, we started this year, is from Toastmasters International. And if you're not familiar with Toastmasters, they're an international organization of adults that are interested in enhancing their public speaking and networking skills. So they worked with us, and we have a new class, a first-ever class of Toastmasters coming through, working on their public schools. So then, once again, rather than have me talk about it, all about it, I have two of our first class of Toastmasters joining us tonight, Niha and Haben Barnhain. And they're here to tell you about their Toastmasters experience.
Toastmasters is a public speaking program that helps students in their ability to grow in their confidence in public speaking. It helps us with responsibility within all student life. We each have jobs that we change each week. One of the things we do is we evaluate each other and we give each other feedback so that we can grow and help each other in a safe environment. Toastmasters has helped me so much because I have been confident that it's helped me grow so that now I turn away from, oh, no, what do people think of me? To what can I do to better myself? It also helped me learn that I love to write speeches because it helps me organize my thoughts. And instead of me just having bullet points where I can just flow and have organized thoughts, it's helped me organize it so that I can actually say what I want to. We learned to do many things in Toastmasters. We learned how to publicly prepare, evaluate, and present a speech. We learned that we should summarize our speech in bullet points so that we're not just reading a piece of paper and not looking anywhere. We learned to look up and make eye contact with everyone. We also learned how to use our leadership skills when we were Toastmasters. We had to lead the program, and if there was a problem or there was pause, we had to say, pause, we had to say positive feedback first, or we'd say, and next we would be introducing. I learned from Toastmasters how to speak slowly and clearly so that I am understood. I also learned not to be nervous when I'm publicly speaking and that if I am prepared, there's nothing to be nervous about. I am very thankful for my experience because now I have more confidence and I have more leadership skills.
I think Toastmasters is very, very important. Thank you for coming up, Bill. We've also started some strategic community partnerships. Amherst Federal Credit Union is operating a credit union branch in our building on Fridays, and our students actually man the branch. When they do transactions, they open accounts. So giving them real-world business skills and really working with a nice community partner. Forty-three North, if you're familiar with Forty-three North, they're a local organization, kind of a Shark Tank, it's a Shark Tank-style competition where the startup entrepreneurs can actually win a million dollars in Western New York. They are working with us. The Forty-three North staff is working for our little millionaires here that are doing their own business plans in their business classes. And here you see some students that are very proud of their winning business plan. Again, working with a partner, real-life, real-world skills and bringing the curriculum to life in some fun and engaging activities. Guest speakers, Ms. Abels.
Our teachers work very hard to bring curriculum to life. And one example of this is some of our seniors read Fences, the August Wilson play. And the retired professor, Stephen Henderson, who starred on Broadway and the film, was such a huge hit when he came to speak with the students last spring that we tried, he was scheduled to come in November, but fortunately, unfortunately for us, fortunately for him, Fences was such a huge hit, he wasn't able to come. But we're hoping to come in the spring. But thanks to our PTSA, Susan and Katie Rapp and Tim Winlong, too, took the students to go see the play at the movies. And they were excited, really excited about seeing this and getting ready to read it. And Susan sent this picture to Stephen, and he just was thrilled to death that he could influence kids to be excited to go and see something that students wouldn't necessarily be interested in. So we're hoping Stephen comes back in the spring, and the kids just loved him. And the one message, a really important message he gave to the kids when the kids would ask him, how did you, how did you become so successful? And he says, work gets you work. And so the kids really understood that if they want to be successful, they have to give themselves lots of options of work art.
So, you know, great way, guest speakers are a great way to bring the curriculum to life. And Hollywood meets Amherst in terms of Stephen McKinley Henderson, an A-list Hollywood actor visiting our building. If you've watched the Oscars, Lila Davis was accepting her Oscar, and one of the first names out of her mouth was Stephen McKinley Henderson as an inspiration to her in a wonderful poster. So great opportunity for our students. A cornerstone for a culture of thinking and learning. How does a school develop a culture that promotes inquiry and advances the organization, again, around individual learning? We're continuing our professional reading this year, looking at Ken Robinson's Creative Schools. Our theme in the past few books we've studied over the years is creativity and innovation. We know that we need our students to be creative in the creative economy that they will face in the future. So if you're talking about college and career readiness, creativity and innovation are part of that. So we want to bring that to life in our professional reading. We continue with those efforts. Speaking of innovation, our Innovation Lab is really coming to life. We've added 3D printers, four 3D printers this year, a plotter. We also have some VEX robotics on order. So we're going to have our students working with state-of-the-art technology around innovation and STEM. And we have our design and drawing for production, our engineering class, already working with these materials. But we've also been able to add in that same room five Promethean touchscreens. So it's a room that's open to all teachers, and we're doing some ongoing training so they can use that and do innovative instruction on, you know, a nice technological platform. So innovation alive and well at Amherst High School. Finally, is instructional leadership. You know, like I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we always want to sharpen the saw, and we really want to look at, revisit our roots of strong instruction, every lesson being fantastic in the building. So we've developed some kind of organic, uniquely Amherst training that we've developed as an administrative team and worked with teachers as well to deliver uniquely Amherst professional development around a thoughtful teacher model and as well as essential elements. So we've hit on things like objectives, and we looked at the cornerstones. We did some opening days presentations on questioning styles and strategy. Took a close look in our E&amp;L program and how culturally rich media-type of instruction can help not only E&amp;L learners but all learners. So a lot of great things going on in learning. We continue to sharpen the saw around our instruction. And finally, you know, this all hopefully culminates in success. You know, we're seeing great success. Our numbers and our graduation rates continue to do very, very well. And the Buffalo News just a few weeks back pointed out how we've grown in our graduation rate through headwinds of socioeconomics and things of that nature, that we continue to do well with the challenging students at risk at times. So it's all about, you know, you're familiar with these gentlemen. Those are our August graduates, and you've always supported us in the August graduation. And those are some of the kids that really go the distance. And we want every kid, every student at Amherst to walk across that stage and shake your hand and our hand. So we continue to focus on all of these cornerstones, and hopefully it ends up in this, in a graduation and a nice outcome for all of our students. Time for questions. Shameless plug, please follow us, like us on Facebook, and follow us on Twitter. That continues to grow, and it's a great platform to showcase all the great things happening with our students. Any questions for us or even the students, if you have any questions?
I have a question. The first line had the AP honor roll.
Yes.
And you said that that was done off of the amount, well, I guess the question is, is that done just off of the amount of exams that are taken? Or off of the unique students? So we could capture how many students.
Essentially, per capita. How many kids in your building are in an AP program? That ratio on top of that measured woven in is how did they perform? They're in the program and how did they perform? So it's really a measurement of those two things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, and go Tigers. We look forward to that playoff game.
Thank you, Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you to our students once again for doing a great job. Thank you.
Certainly a lot to celebrate in the high school, and it doesn't happen without high-quality leadership. And it's nice to see, even though they're leaving the room right now. Wonderful, your team has come together under your leadership. So thank you, Mr. Pigeon.
Thank you.
We'll transition to our budget update with Mr. Wile, our interim business official. What you'll see in the budget update is we've often talked about how the budget is like a fuzzy picture, and as time goes on, it continues to come more and more into focus. So from the last presentation in February, we have a little bit more focus, but certainly not the focus we are looking for from state aid relative to the financial aid and state aid that will be delivered, hopefully with an on-time budget by April 1st. But Mr. Wile certainly has some information to share with us. And you may also want to note that as the interim business official, one of the tasks... one of the tasks that I've given to Mr. Wile is to really go line item through our budget and not only look at opportunities that we have to close our budget gap, but opportunities where we can to reallocate funds or reduce expenditures. In addition to that, he's also been looking at the structural setup of our budget to make sure that structurally we're minimizing the number of transfers we need throughout the year for things that are predictable like payroll and, and those type of things. So you will see within our projected expenditures, there's been some changes relative to the projections there and that will continue to happen. And that's mostly because Mark is doing a very thorough analysis along with Barb Williams, our treasurer, to really look at every single line item and dollar that we have in the budget.
Thank you. And the first bullet point really does speak to your point that this is a work in progress. And as Mr. Pennella mentioned, I'm looking through both the expenditure and the revenue size of the budget. And the approach is simply different. It's just a different approach from what you've seen before. Trying to use the same format, but we're trying to see if we can look within the budget to see if we can gain some appropriations and place them if we do need additional dollars. And certainly when you see health insurance, I'll, I'll talk about how we've, we've gone so far today and increasing that. These are the same objectives as we had last month. We're just going to be reviewing the changes since our February seventh update. But we will see a revised gap number. We will update our potential areas to cover the gap. We've had some retirements, so we can talk about that a little bit. And then continue our discussion about building contingencies. And certainly as we talk about how I've shifted some of the dollars within the existing framework of the appropriation, talking about contingencies becomes more and more important. So in red, really is the only change in our revenue assumption. The final budget, tax levy amount ended up being three point eight six percent. There was a component of building aid, hardware aid that was originally calculated that actually suppressed the limit. That is not necessary to include. So as a result, I was able to recalculate that levy. The Board of Education decided in February seventh that you wouldn't exceed the levy, which was in the three point six, three point seven range. It actually is now three point eight six. It doesn't mean you have to go to that, but certainly as you agreed last month, you won't need to exceed it. That really is the only revenue piece that has changed. I will be taking a little closer look at the county's sales tax revenue. As Mrs. Conley mentioned in her slide, and this is, this is the slide that she took to you about in December, the sales tax revenue is slowing down. I may tweak that sales tax projection down a little bit. I haven't changed it yet. I want to take a closer look at that. And in our other revenues component, there's a Medicaid reimbursement that we get that I want to take a little closer look at. But I haven't, I haven't made any adjustments to that yet. Our revenues.
Mark, before you go on to that slide, I'm sorry, just to clarify the three point eight six percent change from the three point six seven. We were working with numbers that were prepared by Mrs. Conley. And there was, at some, at one point last year, in the spring and summer, talk amongst the business officials statewide that the state would require an exemption for hardware aid.
Computer hardware aid.
And that was about sixty-five thousand dollars roughly for our, our calculation. So Mrs. Conley was proactively working that into the formula and we got clarification through the Office of the Comptroller that, that in fact was not required in the calculations. So when that was removed, that accounted for the point two percent change in the levy limit.
And you can see that reflected once again in red is the only change in our revenue picture. Now, the levy limit is thirty-five million, three hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine, which would go to a three point eight six percent increase. Once again, that's not a requirement, but it does allow the levy to go up to that magnitude. On the expenditure side, we, we now know of our retirements. We have four additional teacher retirements. We already had one known built in, four additional teachers and one teacher aid. So we have included that in our adjustment to the personnel side of it. We've also taken the benefits, FICA and the retirement system contribution into consideration there as well. So we've reduced the benefit component for that. On the benefits side, health insurance, which was originally estimated at eight percent. We had a difficult two thousand sixteen, which once again, relatively speaking, a difficult two thousand sixteen in health insurance for Amherst would be the envy of many, many others. So we will still see a seventeen, eighteen premium that is very, very attractive. But at this point, we are looking at something in the thirteen to sixteen percent range for an increase. So I have increased that component of, of the budget. But I haven't increased the total budget because what I did see in a couple of areas, particularly some large ticket items, the natural gas budget line had an amount that I felt was appropriate to take away and transfer into health insurance. And then the same thing with transportation. I took a look at our actual expenditures and I'm comfortable that we can revise that transportation number down. So I've essentially shifted those monies into health insurance and therefore tried to accommodate the health insurance increase without increasing the total budget in that area. And I'll continue to do that. We are just a few days away from receiving our February update for health insurance performance. We did have a decent January and it may be that we can tone our projections down for seventeen, eighteen. On the other hand, it may, it may not be that way. So I, I may need to adjust health insurance a little bit more. But I'm, I'm quite confident that both on the revenue and the expenditure side, that the shifts and the variances are going to be of a great magnitude that would dissuade us from talking about levy amounts and certain things that we can include in the budget to, to close the gap. The budget reductions themselves are broken down into a couple of categories. The additional retirement breakage are for teachers and an aid. And therefore, breakage would be the salaries for the retiring people compared to the salaries for incoming employees. So that amount is calculated. And then we've also made some reductions through attrition. A couple of retirements have allowed us to consider attrition based reductions of positions. There are three of them. There's a point eight physical education position that's, that's going to be reduced through attrition, which means that nobody will lose their job. We're going to take advantage of retirement in the teacher aid ranks and there is an opportunity for attrition without anybody losing their job there. And we also have an enrollment based reduction of a teacher aid. So that total of three hundred and thirty-two thousand has been reduced both on the personnel and benefits side of the budget to, to close our gap. So you can see really three pieces. Those two there and then also the tax levy cap change have allowed the, the total gap to be reduced. Difficult to see, but you can, you can see reflected in red, the numbers that have changed. Personnel benefits down because of retirements, health insurance is in the benefit component that was increased. General support is our natural gas, so that's down a little bit. And the instruction and transportation pieces have changed also. Therefore, our budget is now at two point oh seven percent. Our comparison of revenues to expenditures means that the gap, which was over a million dollars a month ago, is now nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. That has then commensurately reduced the gaps in the future years. You can still see that in eighteen, nineteen, we're still looking at something close to two million dollars. But as we mentioned last time, there's nothing, we're really panicking about right now. Because certainly if we can close the, the gap for seventeen, eighteen down to zero, then we will see an equivalent movement of the others. So we may very well be looking at a million dollars rather than one point nine for the following year when all is said and done. But we need to be cognizant that there is, there is a gap that we're looking at. Time will move on and we may very well see that that gap will naturally close. So we will, we'll continue to monitor that. So keep the nine twenty-one in mind as your difference between revenues and expenditures. When we get to the, the next slide with potential gap closing items. Fund balance and reserve, I'm just going to get on that briefly. This is exactly the same information that Mrs. Conley gave you in December. And at a future meeting, we will be talking a little bit more about fund balance and reserve. We'll concentrate on that. We'll give you a determination of what we believe our six thirty seventeen fund balance might be. Our, the efforts through this year with freezing, purchasing and taking a look at some other cost containment. We believe that that number will grow. And it is our hope that when we see that grow, we'll have a confident prediction of what our fund balance will be, which will allow us to talk a little bit more about contingencies funded via the fund balance in its entirety.
Yeah, Mark, just to interject or add, you know, we, we certainly looked at a slide similar to this a year or so ago and that number, that ending balance was about eight million dollars. So it's a little staggering to see five million there in a year and a half's time. But again, as a, a result of many factors, we appropriated one point nine million in last year's budget, one point six of which was, was actually expended. And then now we are using one point three million of the reserves for seed money, for lack of a better term, for our capital project that's forthcoming in twenty eighteen that was just approved by the voters. So one of the things that we're really keeping a keen eye on right now is the volatility that exists within our bond market. And we continue to monitor that because that has an impact on our debt service, you know, interest and principal payments. And that could have anywhere from, you know, a six figure swing in our expenditures in, in any given year depending upon where we are relative to our borrowing. So as we continue to monitor that, we know that healthy reserves and a, and a fully funded fund balance certainly is a goal because as we continue to borrow to improve our facilities, we know that it may be a little bit more expensive than what was projected a year or so ago when we set out to initiate the twenty-nine point six million dollar capital project. So the time to plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is now. So as we get into the conversations relative to your fund balance or unexpended funds or variance, whatever term you'd like to use, you know, we're also considering options for how we may be able to set up our reserve accounts that would allow us to smooth out the impact of the local share as that project that was just approved in December starts to come to fruition and the borrowing begins in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. So just to keep that in the back of your mind.
Right. You, you will likely get, or you may have received a comment or recommendation from the independent auditors that this grand total of five point one million dollars is okay, but it, it should, should grow. And, and as, as you mentioned, one year, the budget was supported with one point nine million dollars for fund balance, allowing the program to continue and allowing time to, to even things out. So it, it is still a goal to increase that fund balance in total. And as a result, we need to, we need to manage that. And the, the idea is that by the time we get to the end of June, that five point one million, that should be a number that starts with a six. We'll see, we'll see how close we can get to that. The potential items to close the budget gap are quite similar to what you saw last month. The difference is that the retirements and some budget reductions are now included. And if we do see a state budget in the next few weeks, we will be able to talk about first four bullet points and determine how much we can include in the budget on the revenue side. We're very, very confident that these four numbers remaining in black are, are ones that we can indeed eventually put into our, our revenue picture. But at this point, we're just leaving it to one side, noting again that we had a budget gap of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And if you add those numbers together, we are, we do exceed that. So we, we still remain confident that we can, we can close the budget, we can close the gap. We'd like to see if there's a possibility of, of closing it to the point that we can go below the levy limit. We're not sure that we can do that yet, but we believe, or lower than the levy limit. But we, we still think that that's a possibility. I'd like to look at those big ticket items within the budget over the next few weeks to, to see what we can do. And then as you can see in the lines three and four, the state budget is still to be determined. And we usually see a state budget that's finalized with, with more numbers. So we do expect both of those lines to have a positive number associated with them. So we believe that we can, we can close the gap. So once again, that's a, that's a figure that's in the one point one to one point two million dollar range if you add them all together with a nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar gap. So, so that's, that's an important component to remember. Now contingency, going back to the fact that I took from gas and transportation and moved that into health insurance. You can see that those areas were probably utilized with a little bit of extra in them so that there was a contingency. There's nothing wrong with that. That's a, that's a decent way to, to budget. But as we come, become more, we'll call it honest in terms of the, the accuracy of our budget and making sure that our, our transfers are minimized, the idea of then creating contingency, the tighter we get to our budget, more accurate we have with our budget, then the greater our need to discuss a contingency and an amount of money that really has nothing tied to it. And it would be our plan not to spend it if we don't have to. So as, as we build that budget, I would like to recommend putting in a contingency as an addition to this and that the funding would be completely from the fund balance. So there would be no impact on the tax levy. And I think I mentioned it last time, that we would have certain procedures that would be set so that it simply doesn't become a slush fund, it doesn't become something that's easy to identify. We would want to take a look within our existing budget if there are areas that we need to cover before we hit this. But it, it is something that as we, we talk in the next few weeks, I'd like to recommend two, three, four, five hundred thousand, perhaps even more, to, to just include in our budget as that cushion and hopefully not need to touch it.
Well, and again, there's many unplanned expenses. You all are experienced enough at this to know that we're making our best guess in our projections for our expenditures. But in a year's time, we don't know if there'll be a snowstorm or, you know, a roof collapse or all those examples that have been thrown out there that could cost us money that we didn't plan for. So my goal, I mean ideally, I'd like to have three percent contingency, but I don't think we're quite there yet. And I like the fact that you're recommending a contingency that doesn't have an impact on the levy. Because currently, there, there may be some contingency within the budget, but it's built in the expenditures in areas where we typically go over our expenses. So it's not a false contingency, but we know special education is an area where we may go over in our expenses. So there might be a percent or two added to that budget line. We know utilities is an area where you might exceed your expenditures or your projections. So there was a percent or two added to there. And as Mark indicated, you know, he thoroughly analyzed that along about a five year trend line to see that there was the opportunity to offset the increase or anticipated increase in healthcare within the current appropriation. As a result though, you know, if we can close the gap with true revenue and the state comes through with the aid we're anticipating, we can start to chip away on the revenue side a little bit at the EBLAR fund because it's a fully funded reserve as if all of our employees were to retire today and we paid out that benefit. So we know looking year to year, we have about three hundred thousand dollars in the budget for expenditures relative to retire. So we know, looking year to year, we have about $300,000 in the budget for expenditures relative to retirements. And so we'd like to use the EBLAR to offset some of that, but certainly not put us at risk in that area. So the contingency component to me would give us the peace of mind we need being a self-insured school district with health insurance as well as planning for unplanned expenditures, but not put a burden on the taxpayers by increasing the levy unjustly. So that's really the basis behind that.
Any question?
Mark, just a, I have one question. In the out years, have, are the minimum wage calculations in there?
I believe, I believe they are. I believe they are. Mrs. Conley took that into account when she, she made the personal recommendation. So my, my calculations are adjustments for retirements. But you, you, you have components of that. One of the pieces that, that actually isn't part of the general fund would be the school lunch fund. So your cafeteria workers, they're, the impact of minimum wage to them would be part outside of, of that. Most of your employees within the general fund are covered by collective bargaining agreement or are being paid at or above minimum wage. There may be a few aide or assistant starting positions that might need to match that.
Yeah, it's an 1819 and 1920.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if she could get it up to the contracts, that's what I.
There was, when that was passed last budget in April, you may recall in your previous role in the HR office, you prepared an analysis of what it would look like factoring in the 70 cents increase annually. And the impact was, was very nominal. I, I don't think it exceeded 10 to 15,000 dollars in any given year. And if it's not factored into the out years projection, we certainly will make sure it is. But our, our biggest concern relative to that, if you recall our conversation at the time, was, you know, that it may affect collective bargaining because if folks are a certain percentage above minimum wage now, they may want to maintain that ratio and that percentage above it. So we fully anticipate that as those negotiations, or that takes, takes hold and those negotiations unfold, you know, we may have to face that kind of, that kind of, you know, proposal, for lack of a better term. But I don't believe the impact would grow or close the gap projections that are there by an amount that, a significant amount.
Yeah, I didn't think so either. I just, I just wondered if they, how far.
Yeah. But I can, I could dig up and share again, there was a spreadsheet Mark prepared that had the analysis and showed the impact of that law when it was passed last April. I'm pretty certain I have it in my file still.
Mr. Wild, you mentioned that you revised the natural gas budget down to reflect current billing. Of course, we've had a ridiculously nice winter. So, you know, for next year, we can't predict that. So are you, you're using current.
It's gone back. It's gone back. It's a, a few years and we've, we've taken a trend line to see, to make sure that we're not, you know, taking that, that number down too, too far. On the other side of it, if we have a ridiculously bad year, we could put an additional amount in there, but we could also be looking at contingency if, if there's a spike. So.
So it's not really based on just this nice winter.
No, we, we've gone back. In fact, I've been working with Barb Williams, our treasurer, on a number of factors, both revenues, expenditures. And what she does is she, she goes back three to five years and she takes a look and we, we see if there's trends, if there's, if there's a little bit of a roller coaster, then we, we take that into consideration. And to that point, that's why I want to take a look at our sales tax revenue. The trajectory may be a little steeper than I'd like it to, to be. I might want to bring it down a little bit based on those numbers. And then our Riddicade revenues, I'm still taking a look at that. So I do go back. We don't simply take a look at a single year. We make sure that we take a look at the trend.
This seems to be a, a kind of relatively easy budget. We're not, you know, rubbing our hands and worrying about reductions in the future. I'm just wondering, looking through this advocacy notebook, it says that Governor Forma wants to eliminate the foundation aid formula. We have a number of non-funded mandates. Are we doing anything to kind of work with advocacy or politicians to kind of make sure that our funding is as smooth as next year or a year after as it is this year? How is that going to be?
Yeah, there's, well, there was an advocacy effort amongst the superintendents that was pretty coordinated this year where we all met with our legislators. So I recently had the ability to meet with Senator Ransenhoffer along with my colleagues from the other town of Amherst districts, as well as Clarence and Akron. And then we met with Assemblyman Walter a few weeks back, again, the town of Amherst superintendent. And we discussed with him, you know, really three main points. A fully funded and fair and predictable foundation aid formula. There was a time when foundation aid from year to year was relatively predictable and we weren't waiting for the state aid runs to come out. You know, we knew based on the way the formula was implemented that from year to year, you could project relatively easily. So we're asking the governor to go back to a, a fair and predictable foundation aid formula. What he did in his executive proposal was something that has received mixed reviews because certainly some districts benefited from it more than others. He took last year's foundation aid amount and he gave every district at least a 1% increase over last year. But then other, some districts in, in, in those using factors such as wealth and/or ENL status may have received higher increases in their aid. So I believe our increase was about 2.2% relative to our last year's foundation aid amount, where other districts may have received the minimum 1% that they tried to guarantee everybody. The foundation, so they, they refer to the foundation aid formula from 2008 in the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit, or law case that was settled. And there was a promise that the foundation aid formula would be calculated a certain way. And this proposal that he put out there in the executive proposal is a slight deviation from that formula. And what the concern may be is that the way the current formula, as is proposed by the executive, may work is that it is subject to change based on political headwinds and influences such as who holds a majority and what house and where they're from without, within geographic region in the state. And that was a ti, there was a time in our state when geography played a role in where the money went. And so the 2008 campaign for fiscal equity was an attempt to get away from that. The, the email that I have in my draft now is going to our district staff by the end of the week. And it talks about the need for a fully funded and predictable foundation aid formula. There's a cer, there's a, not a survey, there's a petition that the Erie County Association of School Boards has out there that they would like folks to sign. I am told that the Senate is looking to have their one-house budget proposal by the end of next week and that the Assembly would be in that same timeframe. So now is really the time to reach out to those folks. So as we have in years past, around the beginning of March, we start to make folks aware that budget deliberations are ongoing in Albany. You know, there's avenues that you could use to get your voice out there and be heard. The main one that is being promoted by the Erie County Association of School Boards is to sign that petition, which is a relatively easy process for any of you at the table who have signed it. So we're going to push that out to our folks internally soon with the request from our principals through the mechanisms that they have to try to push it out to the larger community. So as you know, Mr. Pigeon publishes the Tiger Times online. There'll be an article in there. In addition, we have newsletters at all of our buildings and the ability to email folks as well. That happens regularly. So.
I noticed, at least of last week, the, our advocacy page on the website was from last year. I don't, I think we probably need to change that. Because the, the request last year was for, to, to eliminate the gap elimination adjustment and also that needs to be.
Yeah, so we had, if you recall, we had a, a plan for us to attend the advocacy workshop. And it was scheduled for a Saturday in February, maybe even January. I think it was January 28th, which they moved it up, which was a good move on their part. Unfortunately, due to some bad weather forecasting, they canceled the workshop on that Saturday morning. And the rescheduled date was for a Thursday evening and our group wasn't able to attend. So the materials that you have are the materials that were presented at that workshop. Our plan was to shortly after the January 28th meeting, update the advocacy website. What we did though, to make sure that the outdated information wasn't so apparent, was we removed the quick link button on the main page. So it's still available and still live under the Board of Ed. But we used to have a quickly button on the main webpage that said advocacy, click here and, you know, it was there. So we left it knowing that a lot of the information was still relevant with the intent of updating it after January 28th. And certainly now that we have the information that you're referring to, we can do that as well. It is a little bit of a tricky year as you indicate, because last year there was a big fish. It was the gap elimination adjustment. And you could say Amherst has lost 9.5 million dollars as a result of the gap elimination adjustment that needs to go. This year, talking about the foundation aid formula and the intricacies of that are very difficult. But the bottom line is that, you know, the proposal from the governor only increased foundation aid from last year, about 326 million over last year's amount. And the state conference, state education, as well as the Board of Regents called for a minimum increase of 1.1 to 1.4 billion just for us to be able to open the doors and maintain programs. So there's certainly a big difference in what is asked for and what has been proposed. In meeting with our legislators, they were very, I guess, direct in the sense that they see positive movement coming from the legislative proposal. There was, Mark, help me with the number. There was roughly 150 million dollars in the executive proposal that was undesignedated. So there's room that he built into his proposal to negotiate.
170.
Yeah, oh, 170 million. There's 170 million that was unappropriated in his budget. There's also built into his budget competitive grants that he's had in there annually. I think 50 to 100 million dollars and some of them don't even get awarded. So there's a push to really make sure that that 50 million dollars gets put into the foundation aid formula where it's most useful. So right there in that conversation, there's over 200 million dollar additional funds that are already in his proposal. Not to mention, last year's education total was 1.4 billion and his proposal was 1 billion. And his proposal last year was about 920, that million from his executive and it ended up at 1.4 billion. So there's optimism that there'll be movement in the positive direction. Though really one of the big items too, to keep an eye out for that was communicated, also in the governor's proposal was a clause that gave him the unilateral authority to reduce mid-year aid if the federal government reduces aid that comes from the federal government to the state. And both of our representatives said they are vehemently opposed to that and don't see that as something that would be voted on in the final budget. So that was good news.
So is, is the link to that a bit online? Does it going to be on the website there?
Yes. Yeah, it'll, it'll be in the email that I send to the staff. And, and in the newsletters that I mentioned, we'll also have it on the website with updated language around the advocacy efforts around the foundation aid.
It's interesting because he's the one that brought the lawsuit for fiscal fairness in the schools. And now he's kind of refusing to do that.
Yeah, I think again, the biggest thing I've heard from my more experienced colleagues in the region is the predictability. You know, they, the folks that have been in this chair for times beyond this governor and prior to the 2010, you know, economic troubles, indicated there was a time that the budget was fairly predictable and a fairly easy process within school districts. I'm hopeful with the projections we're looking at that we will turn the tide and we'll start to have conversations about how we can enhance our programs and add programs down the road. And I'm optimistic if we can close our gap with true revenues this year, that will benefit in each of those out years in our projections.
So let me make it clear though, we're still facing this gap. We still need things to happen that are in our favor. Which.
Yeah.
And so just because you're not standing up and screaming about things, we. I'm not so sure this is an easy budget. I think it's the way it's been approached is easy.
I guess I, I guess I'm, I assure your concern that we may be, as a community, complacent when, you know, we need every parent and every community member to, to be behind us, even if it is a, a budget where we, we aren't showing reductions. I think that it's very important to let people know that this year's okay, but, you know, we still need to be vigilant and.
Well, to your point, and I'm looking at the, the picture of the gap. I mean, if, if those numbers do come to fruition, we should, should be able to relatively simply close the gap. We don't see them yet on the runs, but, you know, the, in, in, in our research, we feel quite confident that those will appear. But one, one year down the road, if I took 900,000 dollars off that gap, that 1.9 million is still a million dollars. So what, we, we still are facing something that is a significant gap 12 months from now. And I think to your point, it, while it may appear to be a simple predictability of those numbers and, and what is actually going to appear in 18, 19 is important. And I think as we go back last year, we were dealing with a budget that for the, for the year ahead, this current year was, was okay, but we were still not quite sure what was going to happen in 17, 18. So I think the, the idea of having a multi-year projection, a long-range budget really is, is the, the right thing to do. And it, and it does put things into perspective. So once we get this one locked up and closed, we, we are immediately, if not already, starting to look at 18, 19 and beyond. And as you mentioned, the, the new capital project, we're, we're taking a look at the local share. And we're looking at the year 2020, 21. We're looking at what we'll need to do several years in advance when we have the, the aid and the, the bonds and the bands on that. So it is a multi-year project as we, as we move forward.
Mr. Wild, are we expected to have an on-time budget with the state?
We are, we're anticipating an on-time budget. There may be a little bit of gamesmanship played at the last minute. But if it's not March 30th or April 1st, it might be midnight the morning of April 2nd. That, that's what our expectation is, that we're not going to be seeing something that we saw 20 odd years ago where it, it ran into, into August. Although, once again, to your point, it was relatively predictable, even though the budgets were late, we could project them reasonably well. But we're, we're hearing that around about April 1st, we probably won't see something next week. It, it'll probably go right down to that, that deadline because the politicians will, will do what they need to do in order to send a message and get things done. So. And, and that'll allow us a couple of board meetings to put some of those revenue pictures in, in greater focus.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. That's the last one.
We will need a motion for new business.
I'd like a motion for new business items F1, A through E, 2, A through D.
A second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving new business items F1, A through E and F2, A through D, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. Cusory, do we have any follow-up action items?
I have two, the superintendent to share the impact of the minimum wage increase in out-year projections and to update the advocacy page in the website.
With that, we will.
I have a question. Like when Mr. Pigeon was talking about that February 28th high school event where there was like, you know, introduction and the challenge to change, whether or not there's that stuff that, that we could attend, that maybe that could be made known to us, that, you know, to, to roll out this coming and with kind of the.
Um, yeah, I mean typically it was. Um, yeah. I mean, typically, it was a school event, so it wasn't open to the parents or, you know, to the community. So I guess that would be a new request that we would have to talk about, you know, whether or not we have board members attending school, typical school functions. Because it was during the day, it was an assembly. So, you know, if it's, normally, the, the general board operating protocol has been, if, you know, you're there in attendance as a parent, you know, that's normal. If there's a request for attendance in your capacity as a board member, then that request typically, you know, will come to Mrs. Custody and, and we arrange for that. But it's not one that, I think, we've had in, in recent years for board members to attend assemblies during the school day. But it's certainly something we can
Sounds like it was a really exciting event to, to see.
And the difference with that one, it was in place of the Black History Program that turned on. There was no
Which was the evening.
Which was the evening. There was no notification. Some of us found out the morning of. So I think that transition was different. And they're trying to cover some of those components in that way. So I would say it's slightly different than the regular general assemblies, because it connects, I would say, to things that we're doing district-wide regarding culturally responsive type items that you may in the future. There's also some external partnerships with that that are connected with Universal Buffalo, as well as some of the Black History. So it's slightly, it's a slightly different piece because it's a larger piece. Notification transitionaries is what I put in the purple. Sometimes some people can be asked what we were doing this year, and that wasn't
For Black History Month?
Right, and it got shifted.
From the evening to the
Right, and it was not clearly articulated. I found out the data because I was notified by some of the, something that's, and it sounds like it's a wonderful thing, but that probably would have been something else to share. Because it's a positive piece.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also something that people are going slightly accustomed to the last few years. So, you know, and it's probably in a slightly different light than the regular secondary. So
Yeah. And again, you know, that's a, that's a fine line when we've, we've talked about the roles and responsibilities of board members. Typically, they're at the policy level, they're at the, you know, fiscal oversight level. So, you know, if we're, I think if, if Mr. Pigeon's looking for volunteers relative to putting that production together, you know, in partnership, and he's looked to partner with, you know, members of the Board of Education, that would be a great opportunity. But we haven't seen that request in the recent past. So I think, you know, there's certainly opportunities there. But, you know, again, there's always been that understanding that you all are invited to everything, that the parents are invited to, you know, especially as, in your roles as parents. But as board members, you know, typically, your roles and responsibilities are at a higher level relative to policy and fiscal oversight. So.
We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'd make a motion that we convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
A second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.